All the order, the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three regular school committee meeting, we'll start with the I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, members and most of the audience, would you please for a moment, remain standing for a moment of silence for a staff member who's passed away recently, Booth McCarron, an educator for our district, may she rest in peace.
The superintendent, please call the roll.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Just call me.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present.
Ms. Lipsett.
Here.
Mr. Morenino.
Present.
Dr. Wells.
Present.
Mr. Kissel.
Here. The next portion will be to open up the public comment, but I did want to acknowledge all the emails that we've received as a collective school committee. They will be kept on file electronically, of course, and I also want to recognize the staff that's present, we appreciate that, and Barbara Locke, the WTA president, as well as Counselor Jeff Dillon and Council President Mike Concannon, and of course, our liaison, Mr. Charles Viola. So we will open up the public comment, as we've done in the past, with topic says this, I would like to try to keep it to the three minutes if we could, that would be ideal. So anyone that's interested in speaking, please come forward, you are being taped, and if you, everyone in the audience could silence their, their cell phones and other, other things, that would be great.
My name is Eric Scarborough, a teacher here for seventeen years at the high school, history, social studies. Last time I was here, I was saying that Woburn schools were not falling behind, but they already were behind, and this budget ensures that. Eight point nine percent does not move Woburn schools forward, it will only move them backwards. When you have to cut an English teacher and a science teacher, that is not a properly funded government, uh, budget. When you have to cut social, emotional, and therapeutic specialists, that is not a properly funded budget. When you have superintendents scrambling to find creative solutions to ensure that further cuts are not made and positions are saved, that is not a properly funded budget, and it's certainly not a functional one. Send the message today, this budget fails Woburn students, like Mr. Kissel said the other night, what, and I'm going to paraphrase, for I do not remember the quote exactly, are we really looking for only an adequate school system, or are we trying to achieve something better here? Vote to make these, our schools whole again, fix these cuts, and send it off to the mayor, Scott Galvin, and have him say that Woburn students deserve less. Now is the time for all of us to stand together. The parents have spoken, the teachers have certainly spoken, and now it's time for the local politicians to stand up for our students, the school committee, the city counselors, and for them to say that this budget does a disservice to our students. Maybe if we stand together now, we'll get a budget that our students truly deserve, and maybe, just maybe, if we all stand together now and we stay together, we won't ever have to worry about this ever again come November. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to?
I also attended last night's finance subcommittee meeting in the hopes of better understanding the thought processes.
I think I.
My name.
My name, yeah, wait, maybe that was Eric, and we know who you are, but I forgot to say that.
Linda Smith, for the record, yeah.
Thank you.
I was hoping to better understand the thought processes behind the reductions in force that were announced yesterday morning. Unfortunately, I left feeling frustrated and again disappointed in the district's decision-making process. First and foremost, I'm incredibly confused as to why we're discussing a budget that adds any positions while other positions are being cut. The district is absolutely understaffed at the moment, particularly, particularly in the area of student support staff, so while I would never argue against the value of something like an interventionist or a reading specialist, I'm horrified that we're arguing that those roles are more important than maintaining our current staff. Why don't we use ESSER funds to help maintain the salaries of the current positions that are being cut instead of using them to fund roles that in all likelihood are going to wind up on the cutting room floor next budget season anyways? Seven of the ten cuts are coming from the high school. To those that were part of the process that selected these roles for cuts, how dare you claim to be invested in the social and emotional well-being of students while simultaneously suggesting we cut a social worker, transitional education teacher, and elect to not replace a retiree in the learning center? Not a single one of these cuts appears to be well thought out or considered with the best interest of students in mind. Dr. Wells alluded last night to the fact that any riffs is a tricky business and it can lead to a domino effect of sorts, and I assure you that the proposed cuts are doing just that at the high school level, and the students furthermore, who are going to feel that pain the most, are our most vulnerable and high need students. At the last regularly scheduled meeting, this committee discussed how student needs have increased on all fronts, low income, high needs, special ed, across the board. To now entertain the idea of cutting any individual that interacts with students on a daily basis is something that the committee cannot in this moment do. I do not ever want to advocate for anyone to lose their jobs, particularly at the hands of a bully of a mayor who's operating with the city budget that could more than afford to level fund us at the very least. However, if cuts need to be made, I might suggest that we start by looking at administrator positions that have no direct impact on students' day-to-day lives. For example, the curriculum office pays out over a million dollars in salaries to ten people. The proposed cuts, which does include one of the curriculum coordinators already, totals just under seven hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. I understand that these positions were hard fought to create and fund, I do, and I understand how challenging it can be to get things back into the budget once they're gone, but I also know that without these positions, the teaching staff can excel and students can still succeed because we've done it before. In closing, if any cuts need to be made, I would hope that we are being much more thoughtful about making cuts that would have the least amount of impact on student learning conditions and staff working conditions, so I would strongly implore the committee to reconsider the current proposals in order to better meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address?
Hi, my name is Christina McInen. I've been an elementary classroom teacher in Woburn for twenty-two years. I thought I'd start by mentioning that it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So to all of my amazing colleagues, either here tonight or watching from home, I see you and I appreciate you for all that you're contracted to do, but more importantly, I see you and thank you for continuing to go above and beyond for your students of the Woburn, of Woburn on a daily basis. Unless you've been living under a rock, you know that the Woburn Teachers Association has gone through a history-making time of negotiations, which led to the unprecedented teacher strike. The professional educators of Woburn were left feeling completely unsupported by our administration. I sat through many meetings where everyone who sat across from the ta, across the table from the WTA sat in silence. No one had our backs, we felt alone as we struggled to negotiate for our paraprofessionals and our students. And now here we are again, just a couple of months later, struggling to make sure that our students with the highest needs are provided with the supports that they need to be successful. I hear you when saying that we need to get creative with the upcoming budget, kind of repeating what someone else just said, how about we take a look at the many new positions that have been created in the administration area? The number of positions in between teachers and the upper administrators sometimes causes a disconnect with regard to communication about what we actually need in the classrooms. I sincerely hope that you will look further and be able to think of things that will create a better working and learning condition when you decide on where cuts should be made. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm Mary Deluna, grade six through twelve, English department head and veteran Woburn teacher of the Woburn schools for eighteen years. I am compelled to speak tonight because the proposed plan for reduction in force means that I will potentially lose the one thing that I think we can all agree is vital to the Woburn Public Schools, a passionate, hardworking, and well-loved English teacher. Yesterday, I was blindsided with the news that the decision had been made because of budgetary concerns, veteran alternative education teacher Amy Cardozo may be shifted to cover three general education English classes in next year's schedule, and in turn, English teacher Anisa Calixto would be let go. Imagine my shock and dismay in receiving this news, especially after countless hours spent working closely with our guidance director, Donna Sands, to create an appropriate schedule of English classes for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year that would best fit the burgeoning needs of our Woburn High students. And certainly, this was particularly concerning because the high school lost an English teaching position to attrition just a few years ago. If anything, our department could make good use of an additional teacher, not less. I need you to know what will happen to our students if this proposed change is made. First, this proposal takes a veteran teacher of the alternative education program away from the high needs, at-risk population that so desperately require her consistent time, support, and mentorship. These are the same high needs that you have said are a priority. The grave consequences of this poor choice will be apparent in graduation rates in future years. The proposed plan has the students who would have been assigned to the two lost sections of ninth or tenth grade English be absorbed into other sections of ninth or tenth grade English. Remember, these sections are already larger than the needs some of our students require due to a former teacher not being replaced. Class sizes in ninth and tenth grade English will increase dramatically next year. There are serious consequences to this shift. Student-teacher relationships are negatively impacted by larger class sizes, and those very relationships are tied to student motivation as well as social, emotional wellness and safety. Individualized attention for students struggling with reading comprehension and formal writing will be limited and their growth will be stunted. Beyond this, the classes that are impacted for next year are the very classes that have been structured to prepare students to take the MCAS tests. It is more than likely that the tenth grade MCAS scores will drop because a short-sighted decision was made. In its mission statement, the Woburn Public School District claims to be a system that is dedicated to the success of all students, and further claims that all stakeholders effectively communicate and advocate for the resources necessary to maintain and expand our technology, building infrastructures, personnel, and curriculum to prepare our students for their best future. If this is truly what we stand for, we should not be eliminating student-facing positions. Those people who work directly with our young people are the heart and soul of the system. Anisa Calixto is and has been a dedicated part of the Woburn community for years. She's a proud Woburn alumnus. In the heart of the pandemic, Anisa was willing to answer the call to cover a high school English position as a long-term substitute just two days before we started the hybrid school year. Last year, when we needed her, she covered an eighth grade maternity leave and then worked as a paraprofessional at the high school in our time of need. This year, Anisa has not only formed close bonds with the ninth and tenth grade students in her classes, she also volunteers her time after school advising an informal student writing club because she cares, because she's dedicated, and because she is the kind of teacher our students need. It is in the best interest of our Woburn students that we protect the positions of the caring adults who work to teach and guide them through these formative years. So many running for public office in Woburn have stated that it's about the kids in their campaigns. So if it's about the kids, let's put them first and keep them thriving. Our young people deserve better. Thank you.
I'm a licensed transition specialist, and I work at the high school. I have been teaching special education for twenty-two years. The transition specialist position has been eliminated. The role of a transition specialist working with postgraduate students that require additional support during the ages of eighteen to twenty-two is essential. The role of a transition specialist working with high school students to focus on college and career readiness is essential. A group of special education students that have been enrolled in special education programs throughout their careers are planning on attending college this year. Their access to a transition specialist has enabled them to prepare for the years ahead. A WMHS student will be turning twenty-two next week. He is leaving Woburn High with a plan. He will not be dropping off the twenty-two-year-old cliff. His last day of, at WMHS will look like the first day of a more independent life. This student is working four days a week at Stop &amp; Shop. Last year, he worked with a job coach. He was able to increase his confidence and maintain his job through the summer and all of this school year. This student goes to and from work with an MBTA bus. His job coaching and travel training was coordinated by a transition specialist. When he leaves next week, he is set up with DDS in the Mass Rehab Next Generation Careers Program, which just started in December. His dream was to be a swordsmith. To gain more practice with metalwork, he's applying for the Minuteman Technical Institute Night School Program for welding. He enjoys welding since he participated in the Northeast Tech Saturday Program last year and this year. His success is a reflection of the transition skills he learned through the transition program at WMHS that was supported by a transition specialist. The transition specialist does not only take place in the walls of Woburn Memorial High School, this job connects students to the Woburn community and beyond. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in two thousand and twenty-two, the unemployment rate for people with disabilities was at seven point six percent, which is twice as high as the rate of people without disabilities, three point five percent. Transition services are essential and mandated. The job of a transition specialist is crucial. As a side note, I'm the Spectrum Club advisor, and last week, the Mass Commission for LGBTQ Youth invited me to the State House to be presented with an Advancing Equity and Justice Award for my contributions to the well-being of LGBTQ youth as an educator. Thanks.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Chris Dale. This is my first year of teaching here in the Woburn Public Schools District. I teach just upstairs here at the Joyce. You've previously invested in high school computer science and technical education programs in the, in the past years. If you cut the middle school programs, the students will be unprepared and un, the future students will be unprepared and unqualified for those programs in the high school. Middle school is a crucial age for the development of technical literacy and the development of logical skills that underlie productive functioning in our modern technological society. These skills are not taught in any other class. Many other classes assume that these skills will already be inherent in students' knowledge. Many students only understand how to swipe up, swipe down, and maybe save a picture on their phone if I'm really lucky. A lot of my students are not technologically literate in the least. They, they bring Chromebooks back and forth to school and to home every day, and yet they do not necessarily understand even how to save a file on the state, on the storage locally of that computer versus saving it up on Google Drive. They don't understand that. The economic future of the children of Woburn lies in your hands. This city was founded on manufacturing, and the very future of manufacturing lies in advanced manufacturing methods that require significant knowledge of computer science and problem solving. Many of my students, if I ask them to solve a problem, have not a clue how to solve it. The logical systems of thinking are not taught in many classes. MCAS does not require you to understand logical thinking on a grand scale or on a planning scale or even on a scale beyond if not A, then B, and I still have students that have a hard time with that level of logic. Computer science classes teach much more than just programming, it teaches students how to function within the complexity of our modern society. Many students do not understand that a free app is sharing every single piece of information about them. They do not understand that when they leave an app running in the background on their phone, that their location is being tracked. Many apps, you know, there's a lot of, like Amazon, Siri, Alexa, having those open in your home leaves you open to having those conversations recorded on a daily basis. Many folks don't know that, to the extent that cutting a computer science education out of the middle schools is basically like chopping off most of the digital literacy of these next group of children at the knees. Sure, maybe you'll bring it back in the future, but this group of children right now will be irreparably harmed, and I cannot see any reason why that that would be a good idea. I certainly hope that you can ask the people in power that, you know, to actually do something intelligent, to, to really help these children, to make sure that you're not actively harming them with this decision, because every budget cut that harms technology education harms the future of your city, harms the future of these people, harms the future of these children.
My name is James Edward Austin, nearly twenty-year resident, also a, a father of two children that are currently attending Woburn Public Schools. I just wanted to simply come forth and speak about my experience with my daughter who has an IEP, and she's nine years old, and we haven't been receiving adequate services since two thousand and twenty-one, a lot of which, we recently was told that what we should have been receiving, we, we weren't offered. And so I just wanted to say that if this budget goes forward, and what I'm hearing that things are going to be cut, there's a chance that she may continue to receive inadequate services. So I just, I'm asking you guys to plead, I'm pleading with you guys as to a dad, to other dads, to parents, those that are making decisions to, to reconsider, put the children first. My, my daughter is suffering, and, and so are, so is my wife and I, so I just, I just wanted to briefly, I didn't have nothing prepared, but I needed you guys to hear my heart, so thank you.
I'm Amy Cardoso. I'm here before you tonight to discuss the importance of demanding from City Hall a budget that keeps all current positions throughout the district. I've been teaching English at Woburn Memorial High School for twelve years now in the alternative education program. As Mary Deluna said a little while ago, if the proposed cuts do go into effect, my role changes drastically, and my vulnerable, high-needs, at-risk students will suffer. Not only would I be expected to educate and mentor my current alternative students, as well as any others that are admitted to the program for next fall, but I would be taking on three mainstream English classes as well. Besides my student teaching in the fall of two thousand and ten, in a four-month long-term substitute position directly after that, in the spring of two thousand and eleven, I have never taught English in a general education mainstream classroom. I was hired in July two thousand and eleven by then WMHS Principal Joe Finnegan for the alternative education English position, one that existed decades before I was hired and that has plenty of work on its own without the possibility of educating dozens of students outside of the program. I tell you this to clear up any confusion or misunderstanding that previous alternative education teachers also simultaneously taught mainstream classes. They did not, they were solely dedicated to the program. For the past four years, our program has been called Peak because we merged with the former High Expectations Program, which served students with therapeutic needs. However, next year, the programs will split, and alternative education will hopefully still survive. If you understand anything about AE, you know that it's designed to assist struggling, mostly non-special ed students make it across the graduation stage, my favorite day of the school year every year, by the way. It is not a traditional setting, and oftentimes, my students require much more from me than learning reading skills, grammar and vocabulary explanations, or MCAS prep. I don't have nearly enough time tonight to rattle off the never-ending list of non-academic, outside-of-my-job-description things that I have helped students do over the years, but I fear that if I'm now teaching more traditional class periods a day than I'm even teaching within the program that I was literally hired for, when am I going to do all of that? How will I manage the extensive needs of my alternative students while also educating a possible seventy-eight additional mainstream students every day? For many of my kids, the staff of their program are the families they do not have. Some of you seated in front of me right now have been lucky enough to hear their adoration and appreciation of us during our annual program Thanksgiving meal. The ripple effect of my changing role will be felt elsewhere in the school and district as well. Should I need to take on these additional classes if the WMHS English position is cut, I be the district's HSET/GED prep course instructor in the evenings for former WMHS students who have dropped out, as well as adults in the greater Boston area who need tutoring and review to enable them to get a high school equivalency credential. I've done these side jobs for seven years now because I value their importance to society as a whole, but I'm unsure that if I vacate these roles, the school and the district will have an easy time filling them due to various factors. It may sound like I'm solely advocating for the WMHS English Position to remain in the budget, but please don't get me wrong. I am speaking to this particular position because I'm included in the aspects of it that would be directly affected if it's removed, so I feel as if I have the knowledge to mention it as opposed to some of the other cuts that might be made. But I can say confidently that every position at my school that is on the proverbial chopping block is critical to the success of our students and the health of our building. As I stated to you all at a meeting in late March when I appeared before you about another matter, staff morale in Woburn Public Schools is at an all-time low. This news sure isn't helping, especially as it was delivered the day after Teacher Appreciation Day. In closing, I respectfully implore you to do whatever is necessary to save jobs here in Woburn Public Schools. Our students do not deserve to lose people with whom they've built relationships. Our staff does not need yet another letdown during an extremely challenging year. Our community knows the value that we have to their children, and I trust that you all do as well.
Hi, I'm Erica Scarborough. I teach 4th grade at the Reeves, but I'm also a parent of a 1st and a 3rd grader, one of whom is a special ed student at the Hurley Wyman. So tonight, I'm speaking to you more as a parent than as a teacher, though sometimes it's hard to kind of separate the two. I've sat in this room time and again and listened as the fact that our special education enrollment has been rapidly increasing. Yet the cuts being proposed in this budget take educators away from special education classrooms. Phrases like "this is a functional budget" and "it allows us to meet the legal requirements of our students" have been repeated. We need to do better than that. As a parent, I don't want to hear that you aren't going to be able to provide my child with everything that she needs, not just meet her legal requirements. I understand that the mayor has given you a completely unreasonable number. I see and I appreciate all of the work that has been done to save some positions. The addition of the reading specialists, especially as a special ed parent of a child with a reading disability, is huge for me. The benefit for our elementary students is going to be wonderful, and I'm grateful for that. I'm just asking that you don't accept the mayor's number. Put together a budget that provides the students of Woburn with what they actually need. Send that to City Hall. Push back against the mayor that the students of Woburn deserve for us to push our school system forward and not let one man force us backwards.
Hi.
Hello.
Kelly Corin to Wyman Street, veteran Woburn High School teacher. I'll be brief. I'm here to advocate for keeping all current positions in the budget. There should not be layoffs in a city that is $33 million under Proposition 2.5. It's time to lead. Submit a budget that supports students. A budget that makes the Woburn Public Schools excellent, not mediocre. I'm not losing my job, but the cuts that you're making are dismantling a program that has served Woburn students for over 35 years, a program that has kept the dropout rate low and has helped a particularly vulnerable group of students succeed. These cuts do not reflect a budget that puts students first. This budget does not say that this body that I sit in front of values our high-needs, at-risk population. In a time when social-emotional learning is on the tip of everyone's tongue, you choose to decimate alternative education. You can submit your budget directly to the City Council. Maybe you should consider that option. You had five members of the City Council here last night at your subcommittee meeting. There are three here this evening. That's something that doesn't happen that often. Find the courage to lead.
Hi. My name is Matt Elaine. I'm a parent of a 2nd grader at the Malcolm White. I didn't prepare anything. There are people here who can talk about the numbers and the positions a lot more eloquently than I am, so I just want to share a story about my son and talk about what I would like to see in the school committee and the City Council. My son has an IP. He has, he's on the autism spectrum, and he receives behavioral and social-emotional services from staff at the Malcolm White. They've been very supportive of everything he needs there. He also, in the fall and winter, developed alpia, and all his hair fell out, a very traumatic thing for him. He has handled it. He's eight, he handled it great. The kids in his class are great, but the staff at the Malcolm White and the teachers have been so supportive of him and helped us get through that and helped manage his needs so well there. So I feel really strongly that the teachers at the Malcolm White, the staff there, and at all of our schools deserve the support of the parents of this committee. They've just done such a stellar job for my son and my family, as I know they have for lots of other students. So what I would like to see from the school committee that I vote for and for the City Council that I vote for here in Woburn is a committee that stands up to the numbers that we get from the mayor. It is frankly ridiculous to see such low numbers when there are contractually obligated things in the school contracts. I want to see leadership from this group, and that's all I have to say.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jen Hess. I'm a parent of an 11th grader and an 8th grader, and I just, I didn't prepare a speech or anything, but I looked at this budget tonight, and I wanted to burst into tears. This is not a list of figures and math and numbers. This whole budget is full of people, some of whom I know personally, like Amy, and the name that jumped out at me is Azazel Calixto, who's my son's history teacher. I have never heard him or any, either of my kids, talk so much about a teacher, talk so much about what they're learning, what he's shared with them. I don't know why he's on the chopping block, but I just, I think it's frankly, I'm almost embarrassed that this is even happening. We should not be cutting teachers. We should not be cutting staff. We have so much money in the bank, and I just, I feel like, I don't even, I can't even believe this is happening in a city that ought to be doing better. I think, and Mr. Calixto is also a great role model, an example of somebody who didn't grow up in the most privileged circumstances, and now he is a teacher and like guiding the kids into the future. I just, I'm very sorry to see this is happening, and I urge the school committee to give basically, give everybody their money. I mean, honestly.
Hello. My name is Almar Mahedeen. I'm at 2UPSRF. Everyone has their story. I want to give a student perspective, as I was a recent grad. I stay here tonight as a product of the Woburn Education School System. I came out of the Lynn Scott Mentory to the Kennedy Middle School and recently Woburn Memorial High School, and now I'm a business student at Northeast University with a full ride scholarship, and that is entirely because of the school system in Woburn. So that's why I also know the impact of having a leadership that is not entirely connected to the classroom. Now, leaders, many of whom don't have children in the school system, and so when I see certain things in the budget that are taken at face value, I think it's unacceptable. Yesterday, when I was here, there was talk of AP courses, and some of the people on the committee don't even realize the cost of the exams, yet it's something that's being considered no longer funded. And there's a lot of things I could talk about tonight, but I'm going to specifically refer to the PEAK program. I was not a student of the PEAK program, but I was indirectly impacted by educators of that program, two of whom spoke today. One of them was our class advisor, and so I'm sure all of you guys remember your senior prom, and she helped put that together, as well as the Embrace Club, peer mediators, and when you cripple that department, you're essentially not helping them or allowing them to get involved with clubs and school activities that they want to be a part of and support students in ways that are not necessarily their job description. So I look at our current leadership, but not only the school committee. I also refer to our city councilors, the mayor's office, and I think that it's time to stop endorsing and encouraging uninformed decisions. I think spending more time and listening to our teachers, not shutting them out, supporting our teachers and not laying them off, and making sure that we're filling empty posts and not forcing teachers to split numerous amounts of students in their already big classrooms. And I look at alternative and special education and realize that we don't need to leave our students that are the most vulnerable without resources. And if there's no alternative to gutting the very future of our city, then we have a serious problem. So I ask that you, the City Council, as well as the mayor's office, seriously consider the implications, direct and indirect, of what you're proposing.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Madaris. I'm here to speak on behalf of the administrative assistants, who are also subjected to what I consider to be frankly these unjust and misguided attempts to cut these valuable staffing positions in Woburn Public Schools. The administrative assistants are under attack at the high school. Some may say, "Oh, we're only trying to cut two positions," but it's an ongoing attempt to reduce these valuable positions, and it's a disservice to your students because the administrative assistants provide valuable services that ensure student safety, that ensure that students are in school, receiving the education that we all know is important for them to receive. And we are stunned by what is happening right now in the city of Woburn, especially in light of what has gone on in recent history, to show the importance of all of your staff. And the administrative assistants need to not be cut. As a matter of fact, I'm just going to speak on behalf of the teachers as well, since we're all here, and nor should the teachers be cut. And there's enough money in the city of Woburn to take care of any alleged deficiencies that the mayor is trying to claim exist, and we believe that what this body needs to do, I'm sure you, I'm sure you all ran for your positions for a reason, and I really hope the reason was for the students, for the students to receive a quality education, for the students to be safe in school, for the students to have support staff. I'm going to finish by repeating something that a prior speaker said. I don't know her name, or I'd give her credit by name, but I think what this school committee needs to do tonight is find the courage to lead and say to the mayor, say to the entire city of Woburn, "Our students matter, and we're not going to support these unjust and
I just want to say that Mr. Calixto is not one of the people that is being affected, as was mentioned by...
My name is Justine Thomas. I am one of the two school social workers in the TASK program. Next year, I will be the only full-time social worker in the TASK program. This program has 43 rising 10th to 12th grade students with services on the grid. That means that I am legally obligated to provide them a certain number of minutes of services per week, which does not account for the minutes that we use to service other students who are not counseled on the grid or to deal with crisis situations. There is a projected number of over 20 freshmen coming to our program next year. Since January, we've had four new students join our program, and two more are projected to join us this year. In my program, we will lose two people, the other full-time social worker and our transition specialist, who you heard from earlier. This is directly robbing one of the most vulnerable populations in the district of the services that they are legally entitled to due to their disabilities. And I'm not just here about my kids. I teach a class for adjustment counselors at Salem State University, and last night, my lecture was on child and adolescent development. One of the things that we discussed was normative influences. These are things that can either positively or negatively affect an entire population. This is something like COVID, for those of us who are older, 9/11, and they can be localized things. As educators, we know that stability and safety are two of the most important catalysts for healthy development. Therefore, these budget cuts, which will teach students that their relationships with teachers are not stable, that they cannot trust those in power to provide for them, and that their needs are not worth fighting for, and that will become a normative influence for these students, and it's not a positive one. It's about more than losing services, which I think that we can all agree will affect my students and other students who access these social-emotional services. This is about how the committee has the power to create a positive, normative experience for our students, one where they are valued, rather than one that will prolong the instability and trauma our students experienced these past several years. We teach our students to stand up to bullies. It's in a lot of my students' IP holes, so I am asking you to do this. I have some students who are sitting over there. They're not my TASK students, they're my theater students, and I don't have the power to protect them from what's about to happen, but you do, and I'm just asking that you
My name is Donna Sands, and I'm a director of guidance at the high school. So many people have already said everything that I would say, and I don't have a prepared speech, and I'm very glad that someone spoke up on behalf of the administrative assistants. One of the concerns that I really have is our front desk. You know, we hear about all the things going on in the world. The person at that front desk is so important, and the person that we've had at our front desk speaks Portuguese, and so she is able to manage so much. So many of the students and the people coming in with questions have no idea where to even get started, and so that's a huge loss, I think, for the high school. Another person I just want to mention, a position I want to mention, is Kendra Stinson, and she's not in our union, so I just, I just want to say how valuable she has been to overseeing the adjustment counselors in our city from K through 12. I was an adjustment counselor last year, just for one year, and I've been in guidance most, all the other time. And she's not my boss as a curriculum coordinator, but she is so supportive of the guidance counselors at the high school. The number of clinical crises that we see every single day in the guidance department amongst the school adjustment counselors who see the general population, never mind the specialty populations at our school, which have been mostly mentioned tonight. And I also worked at a group with elementary, middle, and high school adjustment counselors last year. She, she is, she answers their questions. They need support. It's very hard to make these very tough decisions sometimes about how serious... about how serious a situation is, how to react, et cetera. And you do need someone who is a leader, who's decisive, who's knowledgeable. And she is all of those things. So to have that particular curriculum coordinator eliminated is really, really worrisome to me, because I think she's done a terrific job, and I think she has so much to offer our district going forward. I was always hoping she'd be like full-time at the high school. That's how great I think she is. Because there's so many things going on in so many programs, I thought she could really help out with a lot of them. And so to hear her position is gone in favor of other positions, where things maybe could have been consolidated, I don't understand. One other thing, I'll just want to emphasize that as the guidance director building a schedule, which now will have to be rebuilt. The English job in particular astonishes me, because there wasn't room in the English classrooms to eliminate a teacher, even to add someone at a part-time basis. So I don't understand that at all. That came as a real shock to me. I hate that there'd be anyone cut, but that is particularly confuddling, given that I see the tallies of the students and the numbers in the classrooms and the numbers in other departments. So that position, I just don't get. So please do all you can to not just accept the numbers that we've been given by the mayor. I know he's hard to negotiate with. I do know that. I've known him my whole life. But we elect a lot of people in the city of Woburn to help support all of the students and provide all the services here. He's not the only one. So we need to like, we all need to be on the same team, you know? And so that we go forward and tell him what we need. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, I guess right now. Oh, there is, okay.
Good evening. I'm Christina Duran. I'm a resident, I'm a parent, and I'm a first-year admin assistant at the Reeves Elementary School. I am saddened to hear that there is a budget cut, and the secretaries are included in that. We are an incredible cog in what goes on in the daily, day-to-day running and operating of a school. We're not just a face at the front door. We do so much behind the scenes. And just like was mentioned beforehand, I myself am a Portuguese-speaking person. We have such a diverse group of residents in our community. They are afraid. We have preschool at the Reeves. They come in there. We are the first sign of what they see and what they expect throughout their time here with us. I help make them feel appreciated, and I help make them feel comfortable. If you lose that at the high school, or there isn't even greater need for that, you're losing so much more. I urge you, I urge you, to do the right thing and don't accept what he has asked you to accept.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none. Next up is, and we did acknowledge, City Council Liaison for the school committee, Charles Vaillot. Like I said, he is in the audience. He will speak at a later meeting. Student representative for the school committee unfortunately is not able to make it this evening. Move on to reports and presentations of the superintendent and staff, the fine and the performing arts update, and the athletic update as well. It will be coming at a later meeting, so we can basically focus on the budget this evening. So moving forward, we have a fiscal year 24 update. Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Crowley.
I'll start with just a few opening remarks. First of all, genuinely, thank you to the educators for being here tonight and for speaking passionately about your jobs. I know the jobs are hard. Ms. Smith alluded to the fact that we've talked about the changing demographics and needs in Woburn at recent school committee meetings. Our special ed population is up over 20%. Our high-needs population is up over 50%. The city is changing in real time. I said this previously, and I wrote it to everybody in an email. We pass a budget, and as of January 1st, we start a new fiscal year. Since January 1st of last year, we've added 17 positions into the budget, four elementary teachers and 13 special ed positions since the budget passed. We have to keep those positions because we need them. And so I'm saying that to the public, to the council, to the committee. And it's reflective, really, of a changing Woburn. And we have people coming in and moving in because it's a desirable place to live and to raise a family and to go to school. We have had over 70 special education students move into Woburn since the budget passed. Hence the 13 positional asks in real time. And so that is our reality. Please know that we are advocating all the time for all kids. This budget process has been and will continue to be a challenge. And so again, it's been a collaborative process. We've tried to invite principals and department heads to speak with us to inform our decisions clearly, you know, as I said, via email. But some decisions are hard to make, and that's part of why we're here tonight, presumably. I will tell you, this week has been particularly challenging. I met on Monday afternoon with the mayor, and that was the first time that we'd spoken specifically about a target to shoot for relative to FY '24. I was told to get close to a $79 million budget. The local receipts are what sort of governed his thinking about the amount of increase. I'm led to believe that there's an $8 million local receipt on the positive side, so $3 million to the city, FY '24, and $5 million to the schools. And that's sort of the logic that he used to inform me of where he wanted to go. And so last night, we had a finance subcommittee meeting, and we presented an 8.93% increase to the finance subcommittee. At 10 o'clock this morning, I spoke to the mayor again, and he asked me to cut another $1 million from the budget today. And so during the course of today, myself and my team sat and were making in real time decisions that we don't like. I just want to be clear, no one likes any of this. And ultimately, we, this afternoon, back at City Hall, arrived at a number we'll share very soon of increase in the budget that the mayor said he would accept. So that's in real time, full transparency to the committee, to anyone watching. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Algonado at this time to kind of walk through the budget with you.
Sure.
Excuse me. Could we expand that maybe to the whole screen? I don't know what we're doing on that TV. Is it set the same? Is it small? I just wanted to go up the screen over there.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. As you can see, this is the budget that was $79.84 million that was put before the finance subcommittee yesterday and is the 8.93% increase. We have additional cuts to that that lowers that percentage, which we'll get to in just a moment. I wanted to begin with the good news, and I'll blow that up a little bit more. These are the new positions that are scheduled for the FY '24 budget. Members of the finance committee will be able to recognize this, since we talked about it last night. You've heard about the reading specialists, there's eight of them, five sped teachers, eight paraprofessionals, 11 interventionists, two BCBAs, a guidance counselor at the high school, an administrative assistant, an additional administrative assistant in sped, and a data administrator in IT. When you count all those up, there are 37 positions. Not all of them are full-time. Not all of them are in the budget. We have 24 of those 37 that will be funded through ESER or other sped grants. 11 of those 24 are part-time employees. That leaves 13 that are funded through the budget at the moment. And regrettably, we have 12 positions in FY '23 that have been eliminated. So those are the new positions that are in the FY '24 budget.
Just a clarification. You said some are part-time, but you're listing them as FTEs? So I'm a little confused.
Yeah. So we took a broader expansion of FTEs. They're not all 1.0s. That's why I made the clarification that there are 37 bodies, if you will.
Okay. But not 37 FTEs?
But not all 37 FTEs. At least 11 of them are part-time.
Okay.
Okay? Yesterday, we presented to the finance subcommittee that we were at, we had a budget of $73.2 million in FY '23, which we know is going to be closer to $74 million with a supplemental appropriation for the settled contracts. When we met last week, we were at $83.9 million, which was about $14.53. And then over the course of, up to yesterday, we got down to $79.8 million, which represents the 8.93% increase. That was our budget as of about 10 o'clock this morning. And you can see the areas of the budget that we drew up, in administration, instructional, and so on and so forth. And those were the amounts that we cut. The $4 million, just over $4 million in cuts or budget transfers. I'll go through those cuts again for the benefit of the full committee. Starting with administration. Regrettably and unfortunately, we have eliminated the HR director role. We are planning to shift the Reeves assistant principal to preschool revolving. This is not a job loss. It just means that Mr. Combinance will be paid out of the preschool revolving. There is a large preschool at that school, so we have every ability to do that. Ms. Young, do you want to take the next?
Sorry. Are we going through the whole list? Sure. The next one is the elimination of the physical and emotional wellness coordinator position. And as we had talked earlier in the budget process, there was a hope to divide the position into the emotional, social-emotional wellness as well, and then the physical wellness coordinator. And so we believe that the social-emotional wellness component of the position is able to, at this time, be reallocated to the coordinators within the student services department, in which we will then also maintain the K-5 and 612 department head for physical education and health. And then the second portion is a shifting of salaries to additional coordinators, with the understanding that we may not be able to keep the positions beyond the next year, in which case we'd be looking for a larger-scale restructure at that time.
The next two positions, we have eliminated the co-teachers that were intended for the Reeves and the Goodyear kindergarten. We are hopeful that we may have fellows that might take those roles with the positions that are eliminated.
This was an ask from the WTA, more specifically, physical education at the elementary school twice a week, something that I think we all agree with as a concept. But we had to put it on the list because of our fiscal realities.
We are not replacing Mr. Marshall at the high school, who is retiring this year. Instead, we'll redistribute the caseloads from that program.
The next one, as well as English teacher further down, as we have heard this evening, is through the restructuring of the therapeutic and alternative education program.
The next one is the transition teacher. We are eliminating the position, and we will instead restructure the transition services to be delivered through the programs at the high school. The next one is, we are eliminating a resource room teacher at the Kennedy. It's presently filled with a long-term sub. We are eliminating a resource room teacher at the Joyce. And we are not replacing presently vacant second special education teacher at the Lindsko.
In addition to all of that, we have looked at line items throughout the budget. We have reduced all of the line items back to FY '23 appropriations, with notable exceptions, sped transportation, utilities, tuition reimbursement. So there are some increases. But we, if you might remember, we had talked last week about that being approximately a $555,000 cut. So we have gone through virtually every line item. We have gone through every line item and hit most of them. You can see the first couple of facilities. We moved forward, reducing sped line items an additional $77,000. Line items throughout all of the elementary and middle school. We reduced the test materials for AP tests by $40,000, which would bring that to zero. So there would be no funding for those students for those tests. We went into the athletics and reduced the equipment uniform ask by $30,000. IT, curriculum, multilingual learners for some of their line items. We shifted some costs to a revolving account. And as you can see, there are additional athletics and student service reductions for a total of $555,000. As I said, that gets us in most line items to FY '23 levels with notable exceptions. The next section is support staff.
And the original ask was nine reading specialists, one for each elementary school and one for each middle school. The production of one is to be splitting the reading specialists between the two middle schools. Looking at the current caseload of the existing reading specialists at the Joyce, we felt that this would be able to allocate the support there. The next is the middle school innovation coach. And just, I wanted full transparency that that is what has served as the middle school librarian position as well. And so that will have some restructuring to ensure that we have a licensed librarian that is overseeing the libraries at the two middle schools to ensure that there's no missed subscription and things like that. I hadn't talked about it yesterday, so I'm going to make sure that...
We have eliminated the ask for the school psychologist at the Goodyear School.
Oh, it's me, I'm sorry. The four interventionists is again, those are just elimination of four of the fifteen asks.
We have eliminated the ask for the second nurse at the Goodyear School.
There are two, two secretary positions, school positions, that we are reducing by two. They happen to be in the high school. Every, every school in the district, all of the elementary and the middle schools have one secretary. The high school has six, so the proposal is to reduce that to four.
We are eliminating one of the social workers at the high school. We have fourteen staff, a combination of guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, social workers, and school psychologists. We will look at reallocating students.
In facilities, they had asked for two non-licensed maintenance staff members. On this round of cuts, we eliminated one of those two. And then at the high school, there was an ask to increase the custodian staff by one. That was an FY twenty-four ask. Unfortunately, we could not grant that, and so we have eliminated that as well.
The next one, it says eliminate a face assistant. This is really just shifting to a different grant that I'm able to use for the family food engagement support. So the position, we believe, will still be maintained, it will just be maintained somewhere else.
The guidance counselor at the high school is an ask. We have shifted that to ESER funding. And the Shamrock Rise teacher that initially was in the grant has moved, in a grant, has been moved back to the operating budget. And we have eliminated two paraprofessional requests.
There were some minor budget offsets of ten thousand dollars. We have staff retirements. The mayor has, and I will turn this over to Ms. Ryan quickly, the mayor has agreed to carry one-point-eight million dollars in out-of-district tuition on the city side of the budget, so we were able to reduce that by one-point-eight million. I don't know, Ms. Ryan, if you want to add anything to that.
Sure. The, the mayor met with me for a, a few hours, and we discussed in depth the out-of-district costs and the impact that out-of-district costs have on the operating budget. And the result of that conversation was that he has agreed to take one-point-eight million dollars and hold it on the city side. We have a stabilization fund that has, that was set up a few years ago, and he has agreed to take one-point-eight million dollars of our out-of-district tuitions to relieve a little bit of pressure on our operating budget.
So as you can see, there was four million, thirty-nine thousand and change of budget cuts or transfers. And as I had said when I began, that brought us from eighty-three point eight-five million dollars to seventy-nine point eight-one-four million dollars, and which was an eight-point-nine-three percent increase. As Dr. Crowley alluded to, today, we were tasked with making additional cuts, and we spent most of the afternoon, or most of the day doing that, and I will get over to that tab. So we reduced the additional nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars, and I will get to the, to the final here. As I had said, we were using seventy-three point two million dollars as an FY twenty-three budget. This reflects roughly seventy-four million dollars with a supplemental appropriation. We, we pulled out an additional nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars, which brings us to seventy-eight point nine million, or a six-point-six-three percent increase. If you want to factor the one-point-eight million dollars that the city is carrying, it would be nine, just over nine percent, but it would actually be six-point-six-three.
And like I said earlier, this is the, the seventy-eight, nine-oh-five, three-nine-three, or six-point-six-three percent is the number that I walked out of City Hall knowing that the mayor would support.
Today.
Today. Late this afternoon.
I mean, that's the number for today.
Yeah.
We still have tomorrow.
So I can run through these cuts as well, if you, if you'd like. We eliminated the middle school computer science classes. We were allowed to tap the energy reserve for an additional one-hundred-thousand dollars to offset the increase in electrical costs. We eliminated the elementary team chair, which was an FY twenty-four ask. We further reduced sped by three paraprofessionals, which was an FY twenty-four ask. The other non-licensed maintenance personnel, which we had, which had survived the first round of cuts, is cut here. We reduced, we shifted the homeless transportation, a portion of it, to Title I. We shifted elementary instructional line item to ESER. We had twenty-five thousand dollars in for our lunch program. We have that every year to write off bad debt for families that may not be able to, to pay. So we reduced that to zero dollars, since lunch will be free next year, we should not have any bad debt. We have a line item of salary adjustment, which is mid-year salary adjustments for various reasons. We reduced that to twenty-five thousand. In sped, we reduced the vision and hearing impaired line item by twenty thousand. The library line item in the IT department by twenty thousand. The translation line item in student services by twenty thousand. In administration, we carry the service leases on many of our machines. That was cut by twenty thousand. We reduced the curriculum elementary instructional line item by fifteen thousand. Mileage line item by twelve thousand. IT also reduced the software line item by ten thousand. In sped, we did the extended school year line item by ten thousand. Hospital tutoring by ten thousand. At the Joyce and Kennedy, we looked at various line items and came up with ten thousand dollars each for the middle schools. In the high school, the workbooks line item was reduced by ten thousand. The communication line item in administration was reduced by ten thousand. We looked at all of the elementary and middle schools and reduced their dues, travel, and seminar line items by just over ninety-four hundred. The software line item in IT by eight thousand. The multilingual line, a multilingual line item by six thousand at the high school. We reduced the SEI Adjustment Council line item by five thousand. PD and ML by forty-five hundred. The English line item in the high school by four thousand. Office supplies in sped by twenty-five hundred. And the advertising line in administration by two thousand. And the, we reduced the lead teacher, it's a zero dollars, because we're transferring that to another program. That's how we got to nine-hundred-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars today. And so our budget at the moment, in front of the school committee, sits at seventy-eight million, nine-hundred-and-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
Dr. Wells? Yeah. Could you explain the MS, Middle School Computer Science Program, where that money's coming from? That's one we didn't see yesterday, so.
Yeah, so, again, we were tasked today to, to come up with some cuts. I reached out to the middle school principals and talked through options. We actually had a Google meet with all principals today to ensure that everybody was hearing the same message, and if people had creative ideas to come forward, and that's where that came from.
And what does that consist of?
The computer science, each of the Kennedy and the Joyce both have a computer science class.
So a teacher?
It's a teacher, yes.
One at each?
One at each.
Okay.
Yeah. It's an elective. The way that the middle school electives are set up, it's by trimester, so they would, and they have three electives, they make it a semester.
Also, the dues, travel, some of, some of those are contractual? Did you?
Those are for, that's administration principals.
But I thought, I thought it was in their contracts.
There was, we went down to contract, to contractualization. Yeah. Yeah, we went down to the, to lowest number possible. We also, and I guess as an overall, for as many of these as possible, for ones that we went down, I believe that there is funding and alternative funding sources if needed, if we need to supplement anything where the, where the needs are. The hope is, is that if it, if we're someone to reach on one of these, if they needed to go beyond it, that we would be able to find an alternative funding source outside of budget.
And just circling back to the English teacher at the high school, I know you explained it, you had some concerns about numbers. Could you just verify that, that's not an English program step?
My conversations with Mr. Martin, but then it would be, I think that it would be a feasible path, as when I discussed it with him last night. Apologize.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Yep. I said I, my, in consultation with Mr. Martin, that that was the, that the determination was that it was able to be made.
Well, so? No? Yes?
Oh, well, I'll start with the moving the one-point-eight million to the city side. I am in favor of that. That cost is very unpredictable. Oftentimes, we are unable to predict it, so that the city and the treasury should have that cost, and that should not be on the school system. So I'd like to just start off, you know, maybe the committee making a motion that we accept the movement of one-point-eight million dollars to the city side and take it off the books of the school committee's.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion.
I just, I don't think that this in any way takes any authority away from the school committee. Maureen Ryan, under her department, will still have the authority to, well, I'm sorry, the team of a special education student will have the authority to decide what the placement should be, but the funding will still be under the school department. So I'm not concerned about any infringement, although I am concerned about infringement in other areas, just not this one. So that's my opinion on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's on the motion. I think, doesn't matter. Dr. Wells? Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure, is, are we going to do subparts of the budget? Because it seems like it's part of the budget. It's not, I'm not exactly sure why we're voting on that separately as opposed to the final budget.
Just to get started. We can just take that off. Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just, I just want to clarify.
It's a positive discussion. Dr. Wells, I think it is a committee decision that we would be giving out over.
Good? No. Just to, for, for the public and for our identification, so one-point-eight million is obviously a huge sum, but it's not the entirety of our out-of-district costs. Could you give a sense of what percentage of our total out-of-district costs that is? And, and, you know, did the conversations with the mayor broach subject of perhaps taking more of that? I mean, I know that's something that we've talked with the city council and with the mayor in the past about, or that certainly that's come up in our conversations, that these are costs that really could be borne out by the city and that would give a little bit more predictability to the school department budget, and now is as good a time as any. So I just, I'm curious as to whether that had come up and, and why that number rather than a larger one.
Sure, I can answer that. The, the out-of-district costs are approximately twelve million dollars. This year, the state raised the tuitions for private schools fourteen percent, which was, has been challenging. And over the past several years, we have had a larger number of students whose needs have exceeded what we can meet in district. In the conversation, we spent quite a bit of time discussing how the out-of-district tuitions work, how the reimbursement process for circuit breaker works, and the challenges with planning for students, because students, it's, it's rolling, students don't necessarily start, you know, in September, for example. It is very unpredictable. You can have students that move in tomorrow and all of a sudden have costs that you, you know, simply could not plan. And we, the number really represents a portion of costs that we are anticipating but are not yet firm. And that was, that was really the discussion. It was understanding the intricacies of how it works, and that was the number that he was comfortable taking, and so one-point-eight million out of twelve million.
Okay, so if I, if I understand you correctly, these are costs, you're attempting to, in consultation with the mayor, sort of identify a likely amount that we are going to need to increase and, and shifting that to the city side, is that correct?
Yes. We try to, to plan for the year, and we have many students that are on wait lists or haven't yet started. And there's, again, it's very fluid. It's challenging.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, it would be, it would be beneficial if, if additional could be taken on, but I understand also that's, you know, a balance that, that really results in the, in the same overall funding level anyway. I, you know, I hope that that's something, yeah, this is not the last budget that we're going to do, so I, you know, I hope that, that's something that we can continue to talk about in, you know, over the, over the coming year in anticipation of the next budget, because that has been one of the biggest drivers of the situation we're in now, and having that cost borne out by the city would, would really improve our ability to have a predictable budget and, and avoid issues like what we're facing right now. So on that motion, that's all I got. Dr. Wells? Follow-up. Could you tell how much we're getting back from the, the state, we're expecting back?
So the circuit breaker will be filed in July, and the percentage tends to come in around seventy percent.
Dollar-wise, I'm just, because you gave a figure of twelve million, and we're getting one-point-eight from the, putting the city side. How much will we get?
Sure, so I can, we can actually pull the specific amount, which is the offset, if you'd like.
Yeah, just so the public's understanding of it.
Yeah, it's, it's a few million dollars.
Two points. Okay. Thank you. So, you got anything? We have a motion to accept the one-point-eight million that will be transferred to the city side. You have a second?
Yes, second.
Second? I think we already had a second anyways. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right.
So Dr. Wells, up on the screen is the circuit breaker?
Mm-hmm.
Reflected at two-point-nine.
Okay, thank you. All right. And I'm sorry, that's already factored into the budget?
It is.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear as well. So with Bob's, Elkanad's presentation, what else? Any other questions on, I hope?
Okay.
There you go.
So as for the new positions, I am in favor of these on this committee. The reading specialists, I think, are essential to address learning gaps and the fact that they're directly working with students who may or may not have reading issues, also tier-one and tier-two instruction. I think it was, it's a very valid investment. I think that the BCBA, I mean, hands down, we absolutely need. What?
Through ESER.
No, I know. I, I support the use of ESER. I understand that we probably will need a six percent budget next year, but I'm ready to argue for that. BCBA, we desperately need two of those, so I'm in favor of those. I think creating an administrative position is, is a very good idea, administrative assistant position. And obviously, the special ed teachers, the five special ed teachers, and the eight paraprofessionals will go directly to building our in-district programming, which are the most, the most vulnerable students in the district, as well as the interventionists who would be working directly with multilingual learners and classroom support. So I think these are tremendous investments, and I, I support the new positions.
Dr. Wells? Yeah, so if we got to the positions, were some of them eliminated? Because you mentioned paraprofessionals, we reduced, and I'm just trying to, I just want to be clear.
Fine. Sorry. I misspoke. Thank you, Dr. Wells, I meant five paraprofessionals.
Well, I know, but it's a eight.
Of the eight.
Yeah. Do we have an updated sheet somewhere with the, how many new positions now, after the next round of cuts? I know yesterday, and I understand that, you know, this is all happening short notice, but it'd be good to know exactly how many new positions we have in this new budget from yesterday.
The number of paraprofessionals is accurate.
Eight? Eight.
Well, there is any five were reduced.
We're adding eight.
Okay.
We had 13 yesterday?
There may have been some that were in grants, but.
Oh, okay.
Reduced by five.
But these numbers, then these numbers are accurate.
Yes.
So, it's five paraprofessionals. I want to correct my comment.
Eight.
We are adding eight, we reduce the ask by five.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Well, my comments still stand that these will go directly to building in district programming in the district.
Are you in the middle of questions right now?
No.
Okay, so I think we're going to go to Colleen.
Can I ask about the, the family engagement assistant? You were looking to increase the, so that we have two positions right now, right? We have a liaison, and then we have an assistant liaison.
Yes.
And so, you were looking to increase the assistant liaison.
An additional, so.
An additional person?
Yes. So, we have the one, so we have our face.
Main liaison.
Main person for the physician who we are looking to actually increase her hours slightly for next year. We have one 19-hour who works the evening, who works the evening, and then we were looking for an additional 19-hour assistant. And that was really to target, we have an assistant who is Portuguese-speaking in the evening, and we were looking to have a 19-hour Portuguese-speaking during the day as our full-time person is Spanish. We do have other options where I can move that position too, so I would anticipate that we'll be able to fund it in an alternative source.
So, I mean, just a quick comment, you know, unfortunately, I was not able to make the budget meeting last night financed because of work obligations, but, and I know this is not on the administrative, but I'm horrified by this. This is, this was already said, these are people, and people that are essential to continuing to, as everybody says, move the district forward. And I understand that the administration had an exceptionally difficult task in front of them to try to juggle the different things that would keep us in compliance and try, I mean, removing any of these people is going to affect our students at the end of the day. They all meet, they all, I don't want to say touch, because that's not the word, but they all have an effect on our students in a positive way. But I don't know what else there is to do. I don't, I mean, I would love to bring it as it was to the mayor, but I, I don't know. I don't know what else we can, we can change at this point. So, I am not happy, and that's all.
Yeah. Ms. Lipsit, please.
I mean, I echo Ms. Cormier's sentiments, this, it is horrifying to see what our administration's been forced to consider here. I, I do, I think the committee needs to consider that there are additional options here, right? You know, I, I, look, I fully understand what the ramifications of submitting a budget that are higher than what the mayor has appropriated may be. I'm fully cognizant that he may return it to us right back again, and, and we'll be right back where we were. But these are our people, these are our students, these are positioned, you know, again, we are not adding bells and whistles here. These are critical, critical jobs for the betterment of the children of Woburn, and, and it pains me as a school committee member, as a teacher, as a parent in this district, to, to have to consider any of these. You know, I, I don't know procedurally what the best option here might be. I don't know whether we want to talk about or entertain the discussion of additions tonight or whether that should be best saved for, for a public hearing after the public has had adequate time with a budget to really weigh in on this. But I, I think we, you know, I know we've, we've hinted around this in previous budgets, but we've never been here, or at least not in my time on this committee. I think we do need to genuinely consider adding in at least some of these really critical positions. I'm looking at, I'm looking at a social worker, I'm looking at resource teachers, I'm looking at student support, you know, these are things that our kids desperately need. And, and so, you know, I guess I'll sort of, we can, we can continue discussion, but I wanted to throw that idea out there, and, and, you know, if it is, if it's what the committee feels is best, we can talk about adjusting it tonight. I think maybe it's better to hold off until the public hearing to really talk about that, but.
You all set?
Yeah, I'm all set for now.
Yeah, I think we do have to have a budget to present to the public, so we do have to have something for them. I can tell you, in my time on the committee, we have sent a budget down that was higher than what the mayor at the time wanted, and the mayor just put in, submitted to the council what he wanted. And then we had to scramble to try to get those cuts before the council started. And, you know, this is the way the city government is set up. You know, and I think, you know, I, I, you know, we asked the administration, and we vote on the superintendent, to give us a budget that he can work with based on the constraints that are provided externally and internally. And I think, you know, to paraphrase Bill Parcells, we're going to ask him to make the dinner, we got to give him ingredients that he asked for for the budget. So, you know, like, what I don't want to see is swapping things, you know, because we all have things, you know, not talk passionately about the library, you know, I see there's cuts and so forth, but I think it's not fair to ask the superintendent to be judged on his ability to lead the system if we start mixing and matching things that we want when we ask him to run the system, and then we evaluate him. So, you know, I'm, you know, and I understand the constraints put on by the administration in terms of the money, but I think ultimately, we just have to reflect the reality, that's what it is. Because the mayor will submit what he wants to submit as a final line item. He doesn't control the, the items, but he controls the bottom line when he submits it to the council. You know, if the council takes action and decides to add it, then it's a lot easier to go back in and add things, you know, at the last minute than it is to cut things at the last minute, I can tell you from experience.
Scotty?
I appreciate Dr. Wells' comments, always, always brilliant. And Mr. Lipsit, I tend to agree with Mr. Lipsit, and I think that we should add positions into this budget that we don't want to cut because the mayor, when he does these things and sets these perimeters, I feel like he ventures into our lead of making education decisions, and he should not be making those. We should be making those based on the needs of the students. So, the positions that I'm very concerned about are the resource teachers at the middle school. With the growing number of special ed educators, these positions are essential. I am very concerned about those. I would be leaning towards making a motion to add those back in, as well as a transitional teacher at the high school. Those are my two big things. I will die on the fat hill. I have to.
No death. No death.
Those are the kinds of things, but I do think that, you know, we need to stand up for the school system for what we do here in this work, and we shouldn't have be pushed around by.
Ms. Chisholm?
I agree with Ms. Crowley with a lot of it. I mean, this is the first time we've actually had to pink slip anybody in the system. I do, I know the time. So, settle down, because you're not going to last long.
This is like the best day of my life.
But it's, it's, at the end of the day, it's going to be what it's going to be, and that's what scares me. And I know that, but we can put it forward and see what happens to it, because that's our job, to push what was best for the school system. And I do want to thank the administration for doing this task over and over and over and over, that we've had multiple finance meetings multiple times. But again, we started dreaming for stars and clouds and all sorts of puppies up there, and we knew we weren't going to get everything. But the one thing that I'm going to insist upon, and I'll jump on my soapbox, is the test materials for the high school. We do not ask any of our students to pay, to put on their cleats, to put on their ice skates, to jump on the balance beam, to pick up a musical instrument to go into play, nor should we. We should be very proud of the fact that we do not ask that of our students, and that is huge to families. But we're willing to say to our brightest kids that we're pushing to take AP courses, that we're trying to add AP courses so that our report card looks better, and then say, oh, by the way, now you have to pay $100 to take that test, that we are mandating them to take. And I know we can say, okay, starting next year, you don't have to take it, but in order for them to pay off for what they've done all that work for, they have to take the test. So, I don't think it's fair that we ask those kids, it's $40,000, and we found out that we could get, you know, some waivers and stuff, so that I absolutely think needs to be added back in. It's little monies, but it's something at this point that I do not think that that should be an expense, you know, that I'd given out to the kids. I just think it's crazy that we'd even entertain that. We don't ask them to pay for busing, we don't ask them to pay for anything else, so don't, don't start there with these kids that we're expecting the best of. So, I just, that's my little soapbox, so I definitely will have that added back in.
Sir, Ms. Lipsit?
So, I just wanted to, you know, and I, I hear Dr. Wells, and I, I, I do, I genuinely appreciate the position that this puts everyone in. This is a, this is an impossible task that we've been asked to, to, to vote on, that the administration has been asked to put together. I, I do, I think we need to at least acknowledge as well that it didn't need to be this impossible. We were asked this morning, we were asked 10 hours ago to reduce this budget by an additional million dollars. That's after having gone through several versions of this budget, through months of talking with principals, with staff, with department heads about our needs. We were told on Monday of an approximation of what our number is, and then when we reached that approximation, we were again told a million less. This is not, this is not a good way to operate a budgeting process. This is not a good way to treat your people. This is not a good way to ensure that we are doing everything that we can for the students of Woburn. When we crisis budget on a regular basis, and, and, you know, again, I've, this is my fourth year on this committee, every budget I have been a part of has had a very similar look, right? We work, and we work, and administration works, and they work, and they work, to produce a budget based on, and sometimes, honestly, it feels like reading tea leaves, and then at the last moment, sometimes very, very literally, at the last moment, we are given another directive as to what we have to cut. We're never given a directive as to, well, we found additional money, we can add that in. We're sold, you know, okay, we have to cut this, we have to cut that, we have to cut a million dollars in 10 hours, right? It is simply not fair to our district, and, and this year especially, it is not fair to the staff that we are potentially losing in this budget. So, and, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't mean the soapbox, but, I, sometimes I do, but my point here is, you know, Dr. Wells, you, you mentioned Bill Parcells and cooking dinner with the ingredients. These are not the ingredients that, and I can't speak for the superintendent, but I think I sort of can, these are not the ingredients that the administrative team wanted to have, right? They are not cooking with the ingredients that they want. They are cooking with the ingredients that are left over in a cupboard, and that's not fair to our kids right now. I, I might be killing an analogy, I'm working off the cuff here, working on the fly.
Done better before.
I have, but, look, you know, we're all, we're all afraid. But the point is, you know, this is not, you know, we, we can't talk about this as, as giving the superintendent autonomy on his budget. He's not operating under that. He's operating under, under constrictions that have been passed down to us at the last moment. I think we can fight for the budget that our administration has advocated for, right? These are the positions that they have advocated for and have now been forced to cut. So, that's, to me, that's what we need to be doing. We need to be looking at what our administration, what our district thinks is the best thing to do to move our district forward, and even if it is hard, even if it means upsetting an apple cart, even if it means maybe making this process more difficult towards the end, which I think, you know, and again, I'm looking at our administration, who's going to have to bear the brunt of it, but I think it will, I, I think we do need to stand up for our students and our staff here. That's all I got.
Yeah, I was saying, what I was really arguing against was cherry picking things from this budget and adding them and taking other things off, because I think that, that's what I could say, that's what, that's my analogy, was not so much the whole budget. I, I tend to agree about the budget process, but reality is reality. Also, you know, I would think that, you know, to be fair, there have been times, and I've been there on the committee, where we've had to go down to the mayor and ask for money mid-cycle, and they have provided it, so we have to be fair. It's not that he's holding money back, but if we go down there with the need during the school year, the school year, then he has answered that call. So, I think, you know, we have to look at everything that's happening with the city. The city is under constraints, we know the economy is in a terrible situation now with inflation, potential job stalling, hiring and so forth, so all of these things have to be taken into account. But ultimately, you know, you know, and I understand the frustration. I was there last year when we were doing our budget, you know, at the last minute, we're questioning how many people, we got, we got the number, we had, we had to deal with it. But that's just the reality. We can all wish that it's not the reality, but it is the reality.
Excuse me, Mr. Wells, why is that the reality?
You can't speak, you can't speak, you can't speak.
It's a reality because the city government is set up in a way that the mayor presents the budget to the city council. He will present the line item that he wants. That is a reality. He's indicated that, that it is now. We, we've asked the administration to go through it and do the best they can, and they've actually added positions. I think that, that says something. They've added positions, they're trying to meet the needs of our students the best they can, and I think we got to support the administration with this budget, because otherwise, I think it's just wasting our time, just spinning our wheels.
I, I just, I also want to let the committee know, the mayor did indicate that he would be willing to come next week to the public hearing.
Okay.
Ms. Crowley?
So, again, thank you, Dr. Wells, eloquently stated, and I, I know, a 6 percent budget for even nine, which it comes out to, is something that I would have never imagined in previous years. So, it's a, it's a very, we're at a good place, but it doesn't really change my position on being, taking a moderate approach and just adding the positions that we really feel like we need. And I think the resource teachers at the, at the middle schools, I just can't imagine. I just think it would give the administration more flexibility in terms of setting up services for kids, and I just think it would be a big risk to cut those positions, and as well as a transitional teacher at the high school, I just think we would be, I think we'd be asking for a mid-year sort of adjustment anyways. So, that, I mean, that's where I am. I'm not saying add in all the positions like I would have in previous years, I'm just saying, just enough to say where the school committee would, that. So, I, my calculation is if we added those positions hypothetically.
The ones you suggested?
The ones that I suggest. I think we'd be around 250.
Yeah.
And that would bring us just slightly over 79, like a 79 one, but I, I'm afraid to do math, so, somebody could maybe present that to us, just to see what we would be.
Bob doing that? Are there other? Yes, I think he's got some stuff.
Oh, is he? In real time?
Why don't you make a motion to have the positions specified?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we add back the following positions into the budget. The resource room teacher at the Kennedy, the resource room teacher at the Joyce, and the transitional, excuse me, transition teacher at the WMHS. Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. On the motion? Ms. Moran?
Thank you, again, a lot of points given here tonight. We can play this game back and forth all night long, appreciate and respect Ms. Crowley's input right now, but again, we can play this chess game all night long with superintendent's paperwork. So, in that case, Ms. Crowley, I probably won't be voting in favor of all of that motion, and maybe you could amend it a little bit after my comments. But I'm going to hold those till this motion, I'm going to wait and see how this flies, because again, we could go back and forth all night long on, well, you're favoring these particular items, and the seven of us, excuse me, somebody else may want to present something else. And I have many, many notes here. For instance, we have conducted a safety survey, it was brought before us tonight about the people that greet our families and our students and our public at the front doors of our buildings, and here we are eliminating administrative assistants at the door. That's wrong. I'll allow Ms. Crowley's motion to go through, and I will, when my time's permitted, I'm going to go through some other notes that I've made all night long, and again. And again, sitting here tonight, who was done more than anyone on this table for budgets, we were actually accused, some of us remember that, by members of the city council that we had too much fluff. I really wish the superintendent came in tonight to tell us, the mayor asked us to add a million at 9:00 this morning, at 9:00 tomorrow tonight, we could find ways to spend a million. Well, this poor team had to come up with ways to chop off a million dollars in a matter of hours to Mr. Lipschitz's point. I'm sure no one back here, no one in this room wants to raise a hand for his position tonight, so we'll continue with Ms. Crowley's motion, and then I'll take the floor after that, so, excuse my time.
I apologize. I'm amending my motion because I did add in the instructional, sorry.
The high school testing?
High school testing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I added that in, so, I'm amending my motion.
On the motion?
On the motion, Dr. Wells?
Yeah, I won't belabor it because we have this discussion on the testing thing, and, you know, and, you know, we know when people have a stake in the game, it's easier for them to, you know, to be higher achievers. So I'm always worried that, you know, because we're paying for the test, and I understand there are waivers for people that can't afford the test, but sometimes when you have a little money in the game, it makes us, it makes people perform better, and that's always been my concern. Well, that's, that's the truth. People don't want to hear it, but that's just my experience, and I think research shows that's the case, but.
I just want to add that Principal Talanin actually brought that to us to try to, yeah.
All right. Any, we're in the middle of a motion, a second. I have, I have on the motion, just because based on what you're looking to add in.
So, yeah, I guess two of my own kids at home.
Is the budget that the mayor, I'm sorry, is there anything in this budget, and I'm sure you've probably done this in the last month or so, that could be kind of transferred over to the city side with longer-term items?
So, the mayor has already accepted the capital?
Yeah.
Of, like, just over $1 million on the city side for next year? That's IT and facilities.
Okay.
So that would be a one-time transfer to the city.
And the amount he's taking on is a dollar amount, or are all the items that we needed to take over there?
A dollar amount is what?
So he gave a dollar amount, we filled the blanks. He said 1.2, or you gave him all the capital?
He agreed to accept the capital, I think it was like 1.05.
1.05 million.
Right.
Okay. And I'm only asking because I thought there was a, a few other items that I had seen when we were looking through the whole budget, but, so that's already been kind of gone through, and he's taken, what is it, 1.2?
1.05.
1.05, all right. And then the other, it's come up many times, and obviously it's a conversation I get in the emails and so on, the positions that we're adding, you know, the ones that some were asks that did get knocked off, but the ones that we are adding, are they, for lack of a better term, more, more needed, more important than the people that we now have that we're cutting? I guess if I can word it that way without sounding fresh.
Just a point of order, you've got to give up the gavel, your, your.
Okay.
You want to go?
Sure. I don't know if there's an answer, so maybe you place this motion, but.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess.
All right. So my question is, is, again, we were adding positions, obviously they're on the list here, and we're cutting positions, and I think it's come up multiple times here at this table, multiple times in the audience, and multiple times in emails.
Yeah.
Or, again, lack of a better term, are they more important than?
So it's a reallocation, and I'm going to point to Ms. Ryan to kind of give you context.
Sure. I can answer for the special education positions. We have had a large number of students from the preschool. We have 17 students on the autism spectrum. We are required by law to add two additional RISE teachers, and with the RISE, teachers come, the support staff in the classrooms. We also have medically fragile students that are aging in the kindergarten, and that has pushed the PALS classroom over the 48-month span. The PALS classroom has, has really been too large for some time, but we cannot legally operate it without the addition of another teacher at this point. And we are opening a SOAR classroom, and the reason we are doing that is because if we don't, we would need to add by law a, an additional RISE classroom to the Joyce, and we are looking at the space constraints. We are required to add another classroom, and we have determined that it would better meet the students' needs if we focused it as a SOAR classroom at the Kennedy where we have the space, rather than at the Joyce where we don't have the space in the particular program. So those are positions that we are, were mandated to have, is the answer with that.
So, one of the numbers that came up tonight, the 1.8, I think Mr. Lipschitz had mentioned it, I wasn't sitting in the chair seat, I probably would have asked the exact same question now, I'm not. So that's, we voted on, we accepted it, obviously we have, you know, opportunity to change that. Is there, is there at all the opportunity, based on the needs that we're filling, to add more to that? I mean, just basically going to say, you know, that's great you do that, but we need more in that, because it's affecting a lot of other things, the cuts we're making, obviously.
That, that really isn't a question that I can answer.
Yeah, no, I guess that's where we probably need to be a little stronger, and then again, the term's been used. Again, I said it last night, and I'll say it again, we did agree on a contract with pretty much the WTA and everyone involved. The mayor was in the room, the mayor definitely kind of agreed to a certain number, been on it long enough to know that, I knew it was going to affect other parts of this budget. It's happened in the past, and it's no different with this mayor. It's great, you know, we settled and, you know, hopefully, you know, we're somewhat happy with it, but at the end of the day, I think we're, you know, this is being affected, and that's kind of what I figured was going to happen. I guess having said that, again, you're making some suggestions. Are we doing any other?
Are we still on the motion?
We have a motion.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
So, my question is, is that it? I've heard that. Is that it?
We've got more.
Because last night was horrible. It was 8.93. We were very horrified by that number, and now we're at 6.65, or whatever the final number is. We should be ultimately just ridiculously horrified. And what we're trying to do is, if we ever got back to 8.93, we'd be happy, but we weren't happy last night. When we were talking about that number, it was, it was still a lot of cuts.
Well, why don't we rule on my motion, not anyone else can make a motion? So I'm going, yeah, so the budget number will be 79.53.
184.
Middle-aged, 184. And I, yeah, so I vote for the addition of those four free positions and instructional supplies. Okay.
All right. We have all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
So 6-1.
6-2.
You opposed?
I mean, 5-2, yes.
Okay.
Just that, same, just that. Should we, should we do a roll call, or are we, are we good?
No, we're good.
I think we're good. Mike, you said yes?
I'll wait.
You took a vote.
Roll call.
That's why I was wondering why it was only 5-2.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Quamier?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lipschitz?
Yes.
Ms. Morena?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
No.
Mr. Kissel?
No. And it's because I want to put more in, so we should just kind of go through the whole process. Instead of piece by piece.
All right. And, if I can be right?
Yes.
And this is sort of why I thought it might have been better to wait until the public hearing on this, give the.
We have to put out a budget for the.
Well, I know, but, you know, at the public hearing, we regularly do make adjustments, right? And, you know, the public hasn't had time with this budget to provide us with feedback. I mean, so I understand the desire to add these positions, I absolutely support that. I would also, so if we're doing this now, I will make a motion to add back the social worker at the high school.
Second.
The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we discuss?
Yeah, we probably should do that. On the motion?
I, that was my, I was going to go for that one, too. The only reason why I was hesitant about that is that there's a guidance counselor going to the high school, and so I didn't know, and so I, they thought that they would have overlapping responsibilities, so, but I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to the petition. That's the only reason why I didn't take the initiative. I don't know why, that was just a case of words. Okay.
So that was on the motion?
That was on the motion.
So we have a first, a motion, we have a second.
We can get the final tally before we go.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
7.06. So that would increase the budget by a total of $311,385 to $79,216,778, or a 7.05% increase.
And Bob, just kind of off the, sorry, if we added in the 1.8 million dollars, just, and the 1.05 for the capital that he gave us, what would that be for a percentage?
Adding both of those in?
Yes, just so we know the.
Would increase to 10.9%, and the budget would be $82,66,778.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second to do, what do we, just add in the social worker?
10.9 would be if we added those money.
Yeah.
That is now what would be reflected in the budget.
Right. It's just, that's what we're getting at.
It would be 79.2 million.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So we're $216,000.
Yeah. I'm good.
Yes, Ms. Morena?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, again, to the administration and their team, wonderful work throughout this process. One of my notes here, the calendar was messed up from day one. I think we all agree with that. We used to have dates well in advance when the mayor wanted the number. It hasn't really worked out this spring for us or for anybody else in the room. So, the calendar from day one really wasn't up to our, you know, we've had better, better steps and better calendars to get a budget to the city, to the staff, to the community. So, I want to check that out, after the calendar was a little bit off skew for us. A couple of weeks ago, we were sitting here at 11%, kind of thought, well, you know, 11 will do it, and the indication was, it hurts, and I made another note, make do. As someone that sat here for many years, whether it's a principal, administrator, whoever it may be, maintenance, oh, they're asking for four. Can you make do with three? Can you make do with two? Well, the answer is, what are they going to tell us? They kind of just make do. And all the years, when you hear make do, it's not fair to anyone. I see an elimination of our HR director. Again, someone that sat here for many, many years, each and every year we fought, before your time, Mr. Aknaka, Mr. Lee was one big advocate for the HR position. And if we presented on the screen in front of everybody tonight what that position entails for the school department, and the indication was, well, City Hall has it for a whole lot less people, and we've got a larger staff with many other needs, whether it's employment, medical, financial, family matters, so we finally had an HR director in here. Now, this individual, this position's going to be eliminated. Again, maybe Monday night, who's going to take over all the roles of the HR director was doing for us? Very, very happy to hear tonight that the mayor will be for us on Monday night, coming up for our public hearing. Again, myself and other members of this community have asked each and every member of the teachers' union and the community to reach out and let the mayor know what you would like to see for a school budget. We're doing the best we can here, the administration is doing the best they can. They cut a million dollars in a day. They didn't add a million, they cut a million dollars in a day. And, you know, I applaud that just to get, you know, status faction out of the mayor saying, well, you got the million, thanks a lot, move along. Fighting for HR was right there. Contacting the mayor. Keep it up. Here we are, you know, Teacher Appreciation Day. Start your message with, if you really appreciate us, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate the students, we appreciate the families that come to us, here's what I'd like to see. The 11 to the 9, we had a couple of weeks ago, and now, you know, 630, one of our beginning speakers tonight, and we've heard time and time again, try to get the district moving forward. A lot of these things we had, we could sit here and say, eh, moving forward. This is moving backwards.
Yes, yep.
And I believe the young ladies already left the room, but we talked about the finances of the city of Urburn. During the teacher's strike, each and every hour, we received emails regarding the financial status, financial situation of the city of Urburn. No surprise to anybody, Urburn's very, very, very well off. So, we have, excuse me, excuse me, to indicate money in, money out, that's wonderful. We still have to approach the mayor and his office to please look at that stabilization account further forward as the rainy day account. We've talked about it in the past, many other budgets, try to say, well, you know, is it raining or is it pouring? That's up for your own edification on that. Grants, we have lots of positions, which, again, thank you to the administration, are going towards grant financing. Wonderful. What happens when that grant runs out? I'm going to be right back here again, asking to fund those positions out of the city budget. So I think the use of our grants and the administrators that are doing that, they're finding ways to keep those positions and to keep those programs, is something that is exemplary for the efforts of all those involved. Again, it was been said over and over again that these aren't just dollars, these are people. These are Urburn educators, Urburn workers that have been around, I'm looking at a lot of them, and, again, I'm not sure if the URBurn Committee tonight will be to come up with a number, whether it's the one we're asked for, the 6.6, the 9.0 with the transfer out of district, perhaps we have a new number, I believe we do, Ms. Aknaka?
Yes.
Excuse me, Bob. I can't see it.
79 million. 79 million, 216,000.
Okay, so that's, looks like for my seat, 7.05%.
That's right.
Still, again, in my opinion, again, 1 of 7, not worthy of what's needed. So, if that becomes the number tonight that we're going to present at the public hearing next week, again, we want messages to go out that even that number is difficult to get the things done and get the program and get the people back. If I could say it tonight and just make a motion that everybody gets restored and we go off from there, that's too difficult, and it's too difficult for us, again, to play, well, I want this, I want that, they want this, they want that. I'm just trying to continue with my notes coming in next week with the mayor. Happy to see that grant money. Again, it's, it's been a long haul for all of the city of Urburn. After things were going on, it wasn't a pretty place to be. Sitting here tonight and seeing these numbers, they're not very pretty as well. I want to applaud the group that did it, the finance committee, the administration, to come up with 6.63%. to come up with 6.63 percent. Don't like it, don't like the 7.0 that we may or may not come up with later tonight, but I do like the concept that we may have a number, a little higher than what the mayor's going to ask, the mayor's going to present to the council, and if it does come down, that the mayor has a strict number, maybe revisit some of these, to Mr. Kissel's indication, you know, is there anything down there that, you know, the mayor would be interested in doing a revolving account for or about? There's so much in here, that it's just, to sit here and take it all in tonight, after what these folks have done in one day, is an awful lot. So, I think, I've checked off all my boxes in my notes, and I think, we'll wait and see what the number will be at the present, at the end of tonight's meeting, and we'll go on and see what happens next week, and the public hearing is still scheduled.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday night, here at 7:00.
Not Monday.
Not Wednesday, I could say Monday. Wednesday, May 10th, which is 7:00 PM, I believe, if I read the agenda correctly.
We...
And the mayor will be here, again, maybe there'll be a little bigger room with the mayor between now and then, so let's hope so. And I appreciate the time, everyone, appreciate the time at the table, and I'll shut up.
Dr. Wells?
Because Mr. Morrendan wasn't able to be there, we did discuss the HR position, and Ms. Akana, if you want to reiterate, like you told the subcommittee, because we raised the same issues, but they...
I didn't make any comments to the subcommittee on the HR position.
I think I did, and I, it's just a recognition, we're all going to have to do more with less, and recognizing that, that work will be distributed to, through my office, to other people in the finance office, try to create an HR generalist, it's a vacant position, and go that route.
Thank you.
Just, Rob, I was going to say, one of the things I wanted to mention was, it is next Wednesday, not, so it does give us a few days. One of the things I do want to say, and I know maybe I have to switch up, but I'll say it quick, so I don't have to switch up. I'm opposed to this, these items here, because I want more. So, what my intent is, in the next, obviously, we have a few days, you know, tomorrow's a short day at City Hall, is to go and speak with the mayor. I know administration's gone down, they've talked, and done what they could, so I will be speaking with the mayor, and kind of indicating between the emails, the comments here, what our needs are as well, and what we want to make this a much better budget, whether it's putting some more money in the 1.8 million, whether it works, it doesn't. I had hoped that maybe he could have made it here this evening, you know, he's going to be at the public meeting, but that's kind of near the end. I would have liked to have found out what the million dollars difference was this morning. I didn't really have a conversation with him, unfortunately, about that, you know, what the reason, the change in the 11, 12 hours. So, that's, am I explaining why I'm saying no to those? I want all of those, but I want more, and I want things that we feel as a committee we need. So, I'll stop, John, because I know I have to give up the gavel. All right, so we have any more talk on adding, or whatever the case may be?
All right, I'll make a motion that we present for publication, for our public hearing, the budget as we just voted on, at 79,216... 79... No, you're right. 79,216,778, at 7.05. Publish that for our public hearing on May 10th. Second.
On the motion, I'm in a bone favor of sending this to public hearing. That does not imply a vote for the budget as a whole. As I've said before, I, you know, I'm not willing necessarily to support a budget where we're seeing staff reductions. You know, I hear the voice of the crowd here, and I know that these are not all the positions that people wanted to see added back in, and I fully understand that, and I fully feel We are in a balancing act, in a really tough spot. I think, you know, my goal was to do what we could to prioritize as much direct student support as possible, that's why I made the motion for the social worker in particular, and I realize it doesn't do the whole job. And I hope that people think about why we are in the position that we're in. So, I will be voting in favor of sending this budget to public hearing, depending on, you know, the results of this week's discussions, we'll take a look at it again after the public hearing. This is also an opportunity for the public to send us your feedback, now that the full budget is going to be available, and I know that that will happen. And so, we'll take another look at it in public hearing. I don't anticipate being able to support a budget that includes staff cuts at that time, but we'll see what we got.
Emails to me is great, emails to the city side is much better, because that's what we're going to be working with. So, to which, again, that's all I can say. Dr. Wells?
Just a little confused, like, if members think that the budget should be higher, I'm just not sure why they're not making the motion now as opposed to after the public hearing. The first three members sort of indicate that they want to hire a budget, but it just seems to me that, I'm just confused as to why not do it now. That's fine.
To allow for further negotiation.
The lawyer in you.
To allow for further settlement discussions.
Again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to Dr. Wells's point, you know, so if I sat here tonight, I could go through each one and say, where it says eliminate, please add that person back in, and, you know, see where we're at. We know where we're supposed to be at, and if the mayor is coming, and perhaps he'll listen to some of the constituents across the city and across, you know, the community of what we need, but, you know, there's some line items and operational things here that, you know, totaled up 555, 387, you know, that's doable, I guess. I mean, athletic equipment, line items, conference fees, things like that, telephones, you know, there's 500 right there, so, you know, that was a cut that is made, so I think we're okay with that. We're asking to eliminate, I believe, four administrators assistants up at the high school, again, to my point of, can you get, can you make do?
Two.
Two? There was two of them, you know, can we add in one more? Again, to my point of make do. But what good is that going to do me tonight? I can go to the next one. We heard about the fricking coordinators that are doing such a wonderful job, if we add them in, there's another position, there's more money, there's just going to keep adding up, basically nothing, because we know that it's going to come back low and be presented to the council. So, if you want, if you want me to do that, Dr. Wells, I'd be more than happy to at least add one administrative assistant back at Woburn Memorial High School, and that way, you know, we're not going to eliminate two, if we have to eliminate two, I ask them to put back one. That would be my motion. And if Mr. Akana had a figure, no one wants a second, we'll move on. All right?
I have a second.
We have a motion already on the table. Can we move on my motion?
I'm sorry.
Yep.
We're getting confused.
Okay.
What was your motion?
Set it down.
Oh, set it down, yeah, yeah.
Send it to publication for our public hearing.
Do you want to...
I said it, I'm waiting for you to rule on it. Or I'm waiting for you to call the rule, or call it.
We, what about an amendment, though?
To what?
Mr. Morrendan's add-on. Can we vote on it?
I think Mr. Morrendan was talking about a separate motion.
He didn't get a second on it, I don't know, maybe he did.
I didn't get a second on it. Did you get a second on yours?
Yes.
Yes, we're on the motion.
Okay, so we have that, we have a motion.
Yep. Can we rule on it?
Yeah, what are we, all in favor?
Aye.
All's...
That's fine.
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
No.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Morrendan?
No.
Dr. Wells?
No.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
You're only going to set in the budget, huh?
No, setting in that figure.
Oh.
Are you putting in your motion now?
Sure, I mean, I just...
The best figure.
Did it fail?
No, it passed.
Oh, okay.
Unless Mr. Kissel, I don't know.
No, I said, I said, yeah.
You said yes? You said no or yes?
Yes.
Okay, pass, pass, so.
Okay, so I have him.
Okay. So, we're done.
That's the number.
Okay, so he's not adding, that's why I didn't know if we wanted amended before we made that motion.
We still have, we have another bite at this.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So, any other comments at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay. I don't know, you were saying Monday, messing everybody up. So, we have, do we have any reports?
No.
I, we did have a finance subcommittee, the other day, finance subcommittee went over the budget, we asked the administration to provide some more information, but unfortunately, they were tied up with other things, so we did not review Mr. Bell's balance of accounts.
No, we haven't adjourned yet, sorry.
Did not review Mr. Bell's?
I know. All right, do we have any other committee reports, instead of going through each name?
No.
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 So, good. Correspondents I mentioned about the emails we have received and plan on getting more, and they will be mentioned in our conversation, in my conversation with the mayor as well. Any other correspondents?
I do, I have two. I was at your direction, I was interfacing with a parent, with safety issues at the Reeves, and I directed it to the administration, but we were all cc'd on it, so I just wanted to make sure the committee knew that we directed that communication to the administration, which responded to DeStefano.
Was calling your... Oh, I don't.
DeStefano?
DeStefano, thank you.
I was going to say, DeStefano.
Yes, Mr. DeStefano.
Record is the way it is.
Some very important points. And then I got an email, correspondence from Marie Delagrande, about the Tanner chew, so we'll be having a resource meeting to see where we are with that.
The shack at the high school potential. Snack shack.
For background, so parents would like to see a concession stand at the high school, and running up against that is the lack of bathrooms, so we're going to talk about the progress of that. Pat, tie your hat.
Re is its ugly day.
Yeah, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, correspondence.
I did have one piece of correspondence, which I haven't had an opportunity to run by administration yet, it came in yesterday, a parent at the Reeves who had some concerns regarding the kindergarten restructuring, so I'm going to bring that up with Ms. Young at the earliest opportunity.
Anyone else, correspondence?
Future agenda items, I think we know what's on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?